Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, February 10, 2014, meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. I invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Brent Putnam. I am Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Selectman Mary Pat Flynn, Town Manager Julian Susso, and Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper. To my right is Vice Chair Doug Jones, Selectman Rebecca Moffett. And Selectman Kevin Murphy will not be joining us this evening. Before we begin the agenda, some procedural announcements. If you have a cellphone or some other device that might spontaneously make noise, we ask that you silence it or turn it off for the duration of your time with us. If you would like to speak this evening, there will be opportunities for public comment. We ask that you wait to be recognized by the chair, that you adhere to our speakers' policy, a copy of which is at the lectern as well as on the door outside. And if you are recognized by the chair, please come to the lectern, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean the audience at home or our recording secretary does. And please direct all questions and comments to the chair. We ask that those of you here in the room with us this evening refrain from any side conversations or any immediately outside the door because it can interrupt the proceedings. If you'd like to record this evening's meeting, you may do so via audio. You simply need to notify the board. If you'd like to do so using video, you have to request permission. And so at this time, I would ask if there's anyone who wishes to record the meeting via audio or video. And hearing none, we'll turn to the next item on our agenda, which are the announcements and proclamations. Ms. Moffett?
Habitat for Humanity Month in Falmouth, April 2014. Proclamation for the town of Falmouth. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod builds affordable housing while encouraging responsible home ownership. And whereas Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod has been building affordable homes on Cape Cod for the past 25 years. And whereas there are currently six Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod in Falmouth. And whereas the town of Falmouth has donated land for Habitat's current building project for two additional homes in downtown Falmouth on Glenwood Avenue. And whereas a group of Falmouth citizens has organized a community-wide effort called Falmouth Builds Together to provide the needed resource to help build these homes. And whereas Falmouth Builds Together wants to show the new homeowners, both of whom have strong ties to Falmouth, our support while building a deeper sense of community in all of us. And whereas Falmouth Builds Together, Falmouth Builds Together also wants to raise awareness of Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, specifically the current build of two new homes on Glenwood Avenue to the wider Falmouth community. Now therefore, we, Brett Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, and Rebecca Moffett, as Selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby declare April as Habitat for Humanity Month in Falmouth.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Unanimous.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chair, Falmouth Chamber of Commerce 100th Anniversary Tribute. Whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce was formally incorporated 100 years ago on February 25, 1914, as the Falmouth Board of Trade and its members and volunteers focused their efforts on promoting the commerce, trade, industry, and public interests of the town of Falmouth. And whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce and its members and volunteers have, over the last 100 years, expended their focused efforts where now they promote, support, and advocate for the business, education, civic, cultural, and environmental interests of the town of Falmouth. And whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce and its members and volunteers have, over the last 100 years, worked to create employment opportunities and a sustainable economy to make the town of Falmouth a preferred and valued place to live and work. And whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce over the last 100 years remains the town's leading broad-based business organization, the town of Falmouth. And whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce and its members and volunteers are proud of our past and focused on our future, and promise to continue their unremitting efforts to keep the town of Falmouth the best place to live and work on Cape Cod for yet another 100 years. And now therefore we, Brent Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, and Rebecca Moffett, as Selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do proclaim February 23 through 28, 2014, Falmouth Chamber of Commerce Week. I so move.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Unanimous.
Mr. Zavala?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're very proud to have reached this important milestone. There are more than 7,500 chambers of commerce across the nation. There are 16 on Cape Cod, and we are proud to be the oldest chamber on Cape Cod. I've come tonight to mark the beginning of our centennial year. We reserved Saturday, February 22, for two hours, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, for a free public forum at the Seacrest Beach Hotel in North Falmouth. We've asked five insightful and well-regarded experts in business, education, civic life, culture, and the environment to talk about the challenges and opportunities ahead in these five vital areas that are the focus of our interest. Those individuals are Michael Hunter, the Executive Director of the Mass Office of Business Development, our own Bob Antonucci, President of Pittsburgh State University, former State Commissioner of Education, and past Superintendent of the Falmouth Public Schools, Eric Turkington, local activist, former state legislator and attorney-at-law, Kevin Howard, the Executive Director of the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod, and Dr. Susan Avery, President and Director of HOE. Our keynote speaker will be Congressman Bill Keating, whose legislative priorities reflect a keen understanding in these areas, and he will offer his thoughts and vision for tomorrow. We hope to inspire the next generation of leaders. Mr. Chairman, we anticipate a large and hopefully regional response to this occasion, and respectfully ask that those who will attend will call the chamber. It's our effort to get a close head count so that we can be well-prepared. And of course, I certainly hope that you'll join us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that proclamation mine now?
Yeah, we can hand it to you. Well, Mr. Murphy is not here to sign it, but you're certainly--
Oh, wait for my signature.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. A few other announcements before we proceed with the rest of the agenda. We still have some vacancies. We are doing some interviews this evening, so hopefully this number will be cut down. The Affirmative Action Committee has three vacant positions. The Board of Assessors has one. The Bike Waste Committee has one. The Building Code Board of Appeals has two positions available. Cable Advisory Committee has two vacancies. The Cape Light Compact has one alternate position. The Conservation Commission has two alternate positions. Council on Aging has one position. Cultural Council, six. Design Review Committee has two alternate positions. The Disabilities Commission, or excuse me, the Commission on Disabilities, has two positions. The Finance Committee has one position. Historic Districts Commission has one position and one alternate position. Historical Commission has one. Human Services has three. Retirement Board, one. Solid Waste Advisory Committee has one vacancy. Steamship Authority Port Council is vacant. The Substance Abuse Commission has four vacancies. The Town Building Committee has three. The Transportation Management Committee has three, and the Zoning Board of Appeals has one alternate vacancy. Anyone interested in applying for these positions, please come to the Town Manager's office, fill out an application, and we'll get you scheduled for an interview. We also want to announce we're going to be holding a workshop on Monday, March 3. The focus of that workshop is going to be committees. We have recently released to the committees the Committee Handbook, which has been a long time in the making, and we want to sit down with the committee chairs, go over the handbook, go over ideas as far as communications and other issues. So our Monday, March 3 meeting will be a workshop. It will be held at the Falmouth Public Library in order to accommodate everyone. And Mr. Susso, you had an announcement as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. We'll have a fuller report at a later meeting of the board, but in general, there's been discussion about the implementation of the FEMA flood insurance maps as it relates to Falmouth and other areas. And I just wanted to note that we received information from Colleen Bailey, who's the state flood hazard mapping coordinator with the Mass DCR Flood Hazard Management Program. And Colleen has confirmed that while there is, has been some action taken in the Senate to delay the dollar increases in potential future flood insurance, the House has not yet acted on that. And she also indicates that no action has been taken whatsoever regarding a delay in the implementation of the new maps. So the delay at this point, which is being discussed, is only on the economic side with the increase potentially in insurance rates. So more information to be forthcoming, and we'll share that in a future meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add on to that. The Board of County Commissioners is in the process of doing its budget, and we have been asked to fund a position of a certified raider. This would be a person who is certified nationally to be able to assist communities in the raiding of properties related to these flood maps in terms of insurance. And we actually decided that we might wait just a little bit before we advertised for the position to see what the House of Representatives in Washington might do. We're not under the same stresses that the towns are in terms of getting their floodplain maps done. But that's something that we thought would be a regional service to the towns if they wanted to take advantage of them. So we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the board or the Town Manager's office?
No.
Okay. All right. That brings us to the public comment section of our meeting. This section is 10 minutes reserved for the general public. Each individual is limited to a maximum of two minutes. When we reach the 10-minute maximum, we do have to move on because we have other items on the agenda. I did see a handover here, so.
Good evening. I'm Judy Stetson, and I'm here speaking for the League of Women Voters of Falmouth with a request. The League of Women Voters was established when women got the vote, and we certainly want voting to be universal and easy to do. However, we also want voters to be informed, and that's why I'm here tonight. We would request that you at least consider putting your packet of information online as well as your agenda so people can come to these meetings with a little more background and information when they want to take part in town affairs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see what we can do to make that happen. Mr. Swig.
Good evening. My name is Ron Swig. I'm the Townest Representative. I'm the Cape Light Compact Board of Governors. And I just would like to, once again, bring everyone's attention to the energy efficiency programs that the county, the Cape Light Compact makes available to all of us here in town. And the Compact does such things with regard to the energy efficiency program, which really is paid for by all of us via our electric bills. But the Cape Light Compact program does audits of homes and looks at energy efficiency aspects of your home, all different aspects of it. They provide CFLs, the Compact fluorescent lights, as well as LEDs, the light-emitting diode-type lights that are much more efficient, and also have incentives and rebates for refrigerators, freezers, room air cleaners, pool. And a lot of these things, at this time of year, we've had quite a winter, and therefore with regard to insulation, I think there are programs for insulation as well and also for lighting in this dark period. But in the summer, there are also energy efficiency aspects concerning pool pumps, also clothes dryers, air conditioning, and heat pumps and this kind of thing. So there's quite a range of incentives, and they can help with energy conservation with regard to our communities. So I think if you'd like to take advantage, this is good for residents, businesses, government buildings, and other aspects, as we know. So I'm just here to bring your attention to that again this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fineran?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. I'd just like to point out that this comment period is resulting from a petitioner's article that I put forward in Fall Town Meeting, which passed. And the subsequent week, the Board of Selectmen voted for a two-month trial period. We far exceeded the two-month trial period. I have not seen any of the negative aspects that you were afraid of. I think it's a very good avenue for people to be involved in the government. And I was wondering when you were going to have the vote that you voted to have, and when is it going to be on the agenda? I know you're not supposed to ask questions, and that's actually your interpretation of the open meeting law, which is actually incorrect, but I prefer it your way. But anyway, it is past the two-month trial period, and I think it's time for Selectmen to do what they voted for and said they would do. Thank you.
I actually did notice this evening when I was looking at the packet prior to the meeting that we had voted to extend this trial period for, as you noted, for two months until January 14. So we are past that. But obviously, the fact that we still have it on the agenda, I think, indicates, as you noted, that it's been successful. So we'll probably have a formal vote on that as time at one of the upcoming meetings, so.
Good evening. I'm Annie Seganek, and I am a member of the Falmouth Human Services Committee. And we're having an Affordable Care Act Community Forum, which I'm going to give a plug right now since I'm here. It's going to be Thursday, February 27, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at the Adrian Woodbrier Place, 389 Gifford Street. If you need more information, you can call the Falmouth Human Services Department. It's 508-548-0533. And again, it's on the Affordable Care Act. It's going to help folks understand what it means for them, what we're going to review the eligibility criteria for financial assistance and how to apply. And we're going to have folks from the Health Connector up in Boston come down and tell our local residents about it. So hopefully, some people will come. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just quickly, I just want to second, Jim Fox, I'm a member of the Planning Board, and I just wanted to second what you've already brought out about the vacancies we have on the boards. And I want to take this as an opportunity to really call people out to come in and volunteer to be part of these boards. We've had some very important things not get done in this town because boards don't have quorums on it and people don't show up for meetings. And there's a lot of motivated people. They come to this meeting and other reasons to speak up, but we really need them to come and be part of the committees that are part of the work and volunteer for it. And the Historic Committee needs it. We have things coming up in front of the Design Review Committee on T-Ticket Avenue coming up. There's just a lot of things that this town needs to do. And all the people, instead of coming complaining, I'd like to see them come out and volunteer and be part of the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once. Going twice. All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have the minutes of meetings, January 18, 2014, public session.
I move approval of the minutes of January 18.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of January 18 is presented. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Unanimous.
And we have the minutes of January 27, 2014, public session.
There's one change that I've already mentioned to our secretary, that on page four, Carmina, last name is Maq Munoz Deluna, and I've given the spelling to her.
Do we have any other corrections? Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the minutes as obtained?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes is corrected. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Unanimous.
And finally, the minutes of the January 27, 2014, executive session.
I move approval of the executive session minutes and not release?
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes and not release them. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Unanimous.
And we have the summary of actions. I'll read through these. I already have a hold on number 10. Item number one, request for grant application for federal Assistant Firefighters Grant, AFG $675,000, the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department. Item two, MS, okay. Item number two, MSBA Grant Authorized Statement of Interest. Item number three, D O E R Energy Management Grant. Item number four, Local Initiative Program Application for the Odd Fellows Hall. Item number five, request use of Messina funds to construct handicap ramp at the Falmouth Heights Beach. Item number six, request for funding from Falmouth Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative for approved Water Quality Management Committee projects. Item number six, request exemption provision from the Conflict of Interest Law for Ron Swig, the Water Quality Analysis Research Project. Item number eight, grant for Harbor Master State District Local Technical Assistance Funds Harbor Management Software.
I was going to hold that if you were here, but I was saying, so I'm not going to hold it.
Okay. Item number nine, affirm Jennifer Petit, Finance Director, as our representative on the retirement board, excuse me. All right. So hearing no holds, a motion to approve items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Not two. I put a hold on two.
Oh, two or one?
No, two.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you are not holding one?
No.
Okay. So items one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Just one comment or question. I know that Articles One and Three have gone to the FINCOM for their purview and taking a look at. Is that also true for the Harbor Master grant? Yes, it is. Great. Then I move approval of those items.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the items listed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Unanimous.
And Ms. Flynn, you held number two.
I held number two. This is an MSBA Authorization and Mass School Building Authority. It's a grant that authorizes the Superintendent of the Falmouth School District to submit to the MSBCA a statement of interest form regarding the Lawrence School with the deficiencies relating to replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. And clearly understand the issue related to the windows. But I guess my question is, why would this request go to the MSBA and not through the Energy ESCO program? Do we know? I mean, I don't know if there's anybody here who can even answer that.
Well, I can take a run at it. Selectman Flynn and Mr. Chairman. As you're quite correct, Selectman Flynn, this is one of the projects which was among those proposed for ESCO funding. And the school committee and the school administration declined to have it included as part of the ESCO. Some other school projects were, of course, included, but the Lawrence School windows were not. The determination, they made the determination that this source of funds, which is, of course, different from the ESCO approach, would be available to them, and they feel that, in the opinion of school administration and the school committee, that this would be a preferred approach to making it an ESCO project. One concern that was raised, although it is allowed, specifically as part of the statute authorizing ESCO and school windows, have been included in ESCO projects. One issue that I recall was raised, they were concerned about the significant length of payback because of the cost of the school windows and the relatively modest return on energy savings. While there would be a payback and ESCO would allow it, that was raised as an issue both at the school level and, as I recall, Finance Committee level. But ultimately, the schools preferred to go after these funds, which would, if approved, and if everything came together and the eligibility was confirmed and the application was filed and granted, would give a partial, a significant but partial reimbursement for the outlay on the school windows.
Okay. So then a follow-up question would be, so the school funds will have to be used to replace the windows. In other words, the grant doesn't cover the replacement of all the windows. Is that your understanding?
That's correct. It's not 100%.
Not 100%. And secondly, with that installation, because it's through MSBCA, would they meet our energy standards in the town? Would that be a requirement that whatever they are, whatever funding or whatever construction they're doing would meet the town's energy standards?
I can't give an absolute answer, but it's a great question. My understanding is that, well, step one would be to design the specification for these window replacements, these replacement windows, and they would only be a portion of the windows in the Lawrence School, those most in need. The $60,000 has already been voted authorized by Town Meeting for the design funds. It's uncertain at this moment whether, when a design architect is engaged to write the specifications, whether $60,000 will be adequate to conclude that. It may not be, which will require us to seek some additional design funding. But because of the fact that the school department will be working through an architect to specify the design and specification of the windows, I'm highly optimistic that the town's standards could be utilized and satisfied. But because it is state money, ultimately, they would have to weigh in and confirm that. So I can't give you an absolute yes, only a guarded yes because of the design process.
So, and I understand that in terms of the regulations at the state-- So, and I understand that in terms of the regulations at the state, that the form is required to be approved by a Board of Selectmen or any governing body, depending on the organization of town.
That's correct.
So I said, I guess I'm thinking that in signing something and saying, yes, we support this, we really don't have a lot of information with which to support it, although I totally agree that those windows need to be replaced. But I think in the future, it'd be nice if we had more information about what the project is, you know, when they expect to do it, what the funds are, what the relative costs are, based on other ways in which to accomplish it. So I'm, I don't know. Becky, maybe from your experience on the school committee, you can offer some insight.
The only thing that I would say is, this is not the first time this has happened. This all looks very familiar, and we have done roofs and windows, and we have gone through this very same process. And I'm sure that your questions were asked, and if it is a copy of what was done before, all the things that you were asking about have been taken care of. But I think it's, Heather, I guess, wants to add also that I think the questions are right in saying, you don't have enough information, but it's not our first time to do this.
Just a bit more information. The windows have been on the town's capital plan for many years. The school has asked to have those windows replaced. We proposed to fund them with the ESCO, and ultimately, the school department determined that that was not the best funding source, but they still are in our capital plan. The funding source for the windows has not been identified. They're simply moving forward with the design and with the MSBA grant application to determine whether they're eligible.
Okay.
Once they determine that the project is eligible, then they'll come back and seek the additional funding that's necessary. But we don't have not identified a funding source, neither has the school department requested a funding source. So we're still in the preliminary funding stages, in my view.
Okay, so there's no reason why we would not, we will see this going forward. Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Do we have a motion?
I would move to authorize the superintendent of the schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Development Authority a statement of interest form dated February 14, 2014.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right, and Mr. Suso, you hold number 10.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The matter of consideration of the board to authorize a subordination of affordable housing restriction to the senior lender at 20 Shore Street, I'll defer to Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper for some remarks, and Associate Town Counsel Pat Harris is also with us this evening as well. Heather?
I passed down a sheet that you saw back in December. This is at least the third time this project has been used by the board. You've authorized $183,000 from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund as trustees of that fund. Back in December, you agreed to long terms, including loan subordination to the primary lender, and we're taking a second position with the Barnstable County Home Consortium. In addition, you agreed that the town council would develop all final terms on the property to protect the funds' interests and subject to all conditions recommended by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, which is the Board of Selectmen. One of the conditions recommended by the Committee Preservation Committee as administrators and adopted by the board was that the affordable housing restriction would remain on the property in perpetuity. We've learned and had the opportunity to see really behind the curtain on how these, how the financing packages come together, and this is, one, a very worthwhile project dedicated to meeting the needs of the most needy in our community in terms of affordable housing. But the process that we've now become familiar with requires the affordable housing restriction to subordinate to the superior lender. Town Council is here to answer any questions about that. That means that it would not, the restriction is not perpetual. There is a risk associated with it. If there's a foreclosure at some future point, then the affordable housing restriction does not carry forward with that note. Mr. Galasso from TRI is here. There's been just a tremendous amount of work on these closing documents, like nothing, honestly, I've ever seen before for a mortgage. But that is an important matter that we didn't feel we could consent to without reviewing with the board and getting their authorization.
So I understand this. We're being asked to be subordinate to the Federal Home Loan Bank, so they get the money first if there's some sort of a problem. And it's not going to be affordable in perpetuity? Or did I hear that wrong?
Well, the first piece you already approved back in December, which we take a second position with the Barnstable County Home Consortium. What is new information in the last several weeks is that the affordable housing restriction is also subordinate to the first mortgage, which means if there's a foreclosure and the first mortgage bank wants to sell the property, they can sell it unencumbered to repeat their funds. So it isn't a certainty that the restriction doesn't prevail, but there is that risk and that possibility. I can't speak for all the lenders, maybe Michael or Pat can contribute, but it's apparently very common in practice, and this is the way this is done. It's just not familiar to us, and we didn't feel we could confidently enter into that arrangement without the trustees making that authorization.
So before I recognize Mr. Galasso, I know we've been criticized in the past for the cost of these units compared to other so-called affordable units. How much is the town into this at this point? Obviously, that's the 183,000. Is that money that if we decided to say, you know what, we don't want to go any further, can we get that back? Or is it sunk costs at this point?
So that is a commitment. Nothing has been expended by the town. In fact, the long terms, the town will not release the funds until the project is at least 50% complete, and then there will be progress payments with a release and retainage and release upon occupancy.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Galasso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Michael Galasso, project manager with TRI, and as Heather says, we've all been working on this project full of it over three years. The condition that Heather has mentioned tonight, subordinating the rental restrictions, I'm sorry, the affordable restrictions, is very typical in affordable housing projects. The reason is that the construction lender is usually the one who's mostly at risk, and so is the permanent lender. And they typically want to be able to, if the project goes into default, typically it's because they need to raise the rents in order to generate enough money to pay the mortgage and so on. So that's why they ask for those restrictions to be subordinated to their loan. Very, very rarely does it occur, and it also has provision in the documents that allows the town to step forward and cure whatever default there may be to protect those restrictions too. So there are what are called carve-outs within those restrictions that allows the town to step in if the project isn't performing and to correct whatever default there is if one does occur in order to preserve the restrictions. Very rarely does it occur, but those restrictions are typical in affordable housing projects.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess I'm a little unclear as to, could you give me a scenario and when would this happen? What would cause foreclosure to occur in this kind of project?
You know, very typical, it's not making a payment on the loan. And typically, in an affordable housing project, I mean, the permanent loan on this project is 200,000. It's typically a very small amount because the rents are so low. This is going to be affordable, the people make 60% of median income. But the lender wants to be protected in case, for some reason, there's a large amount of vacancies, it doesn't create the income that's being projected, and you're unable to pay the, make the mortgage payment. But they're obviously...
Not one payment? I mean...
No, it's typically, has in any foreclosure, whether it's your home or anything, it's usually a series of payments. And of course, the town would be notified, I think part of the documents would provide for notification to the town if we were to miss a number of payments before the project would go into foreclosure. So there's a lot of notification that occurs, which is good protection for everyone involved. It's a very complicated project. There are five lenders on this project, and I know that Heather mentioned, I think, that you're subordinating to the Federal Home Loan Bank, but you're actually subordinating to the first, which would be the construction loans with Mass Housing Investment Corp., and then that's paid off by Bank Five. Federal Home Loan Bank is behind that, so they're a little bit further behind, and they're putting in $97,000 to the project. We have five lenders involved, and Heather and Pat and everyone's done a great job trying to coordinate all this and get to a closing, and we're very close to having that and starting the renovation of that project.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, could we ask Pat Harris to make some comments? She discovered, to the best of my knowledge, that this condition existed, which, you know, my thumbnail summary of this is that it would be the first time that the town would have been invested in affordable housing, which you cannot guarantee will remain an affordable unit. And I believe that's why Pat brought that to our attention, because you would, this deal would be absent that guarantee, so we wanted the board to be aware of that going in. If I'm mistaken, Pat, tell me, but to the best of my knowledge, this would be the first circumstance where that would have occurred in the town's portfolio.
Pat Harris, Associate Town Counsel. I don't have the full history of the town's affordable housing properties in which you've invested in through other, usually CDC funds, but I do know that this is the first project where we've been involved with it and multiple lenders, and this type of arrangement has been structured so that the senior lender has not only preference in the chain of title. The other lenders, as you may see in the note I sent to the town manager, have equal standing, and then there's the senior lender above. But the senior lender also has included in this proposal and in the documentation, and Mr. Galasso is correct in saying, this provision does come from some standard DHCD documents, but the board, when they voted to grant this money as a forgivable loan, you know, included the condition that the property would be affordable in perpetuity. And when I saw the provision in the affordable housing restriction, as well as in what's called a master subordination agreement, which provided that the senior lender could foreclose and extinguish the affordable housing restriction, I felt it was incumbent to bring it to your attention.
Any other questions from the board?
I think I have a lot of questions, but I think it's because I really am not up to date on all of this as you were talking about it. The first thing I would say is, why are there five lenders? Why is this one different than any others? And you all of a sudden discovered this problem.
You know, again, this is only based on my experience, but my understanding, the houses and the transactions the town has funded in the past are more individual, one unit. In this instance, and I'll defer to Heather, because she knows more about the structure and the loan.
This is the first loan the town has granted under the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. There's no, there are no other loans. There have been grants granted, but this is the first loan. So this is the first time we are in a relationship with other bankers on a project. The others have been simple grants.
Have been grants, okay. Okay, very interesting.
And also, if you think about the affordable housing transfers that usually take place with homeownership, there's a deed rider that precedes the acquisition by the individual homeowner, so this doesn't become an issue. But this project is being structured as a development of rental units, and there are a number of lenders involved. And I understand what Mr. Galasso stated is true, that DHCD does provide this master subordination agreement, this deed rider for affordable rental unit developments. However, this board did not know that. We did not know this, as Heather pointed out. This is the first time we went behind the curtain, seeing all the documentation. We felt it was incumbent to bring it to your attention and get authorization to go forward or not.
Is your recommendation that we approve this?
I don't have a recommendation, because this is a policy decision. You know, I'm explaining the legal implications. If they default on their first mortgage, the senior lender can extinguish the affordable housing restriction. There are some provisions in both the deed rider and the master subordination agreement which allow the senior lender to make a determination as to whether or not this property should proceed as affordable housing, but that's solely within their discretion. So they have the ability to extinguish the affordable housing restriction if there is a foreclosure and sell it free and clear to a third party.
But only under the condition there are foreclosure, not just because they think it's not working?
Only under the condition of foreclosure.
My question, I'm not sure if it's for you, or if it's for Michael, and my question is, what is the town's level of risk on this project compared to the risk of the lenders?
Well, it's a tough question, but, you know, the risk in any real estate development project or renovation is typically during the construction period. I mean, that's when there's the biggest risk in the sense of unknowns, cost overruns, not being able to finish the project because there's not enough money available. That's, in this particular case, once we start, we're going to be done within about 120 days, so it's going to be very quick. But that's when I think you have the biggest risk in any project, is during the construction period. And usually, it's early in the construction period when you start tearing the building apart because it's a renovation and you find things. But in this particular case, we've owned the building for quite a while, have had a good opportunity to go through it with our contractor and have a contingency in there too. And as Heather says, you know, there's a lot of people keeping eyes on this project. There are five lenders. They all have construction monitors that are going to be involved out there watching the project as we move ahead. So that's typically the biggest risk. And once we get up and operating, we put together a budget for operations. The income is pretty much set, it's at 60%. And our expenses have been reviewed by everyone, so, you know, it's three units. Unless we're not successful in renting those units, and we think we already have a good list of people who want to move into it and generate the income, I think the risk goes down once we get past the construction point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just an added point, one of the things that we did was make sure that the town's money, which is, we're the second largest lender, with the first being about 200,000 and this being 183,000, so you're the second largest lender in the group, but we withheld our funds until the project was 50% complete, so that the other money comes in first and ours comes in second.
Great, thank you. That's good to know.
Any last questions? Does the board want to proceed?
I would move approval, if that's the motion.
No, we're not going to take public comment on this particular issue this evening. We have a motion to approve?
To authorize subordination of the affordable housing restriction to the senior lender, that's the motion? Then I would make that motion.
Second?
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. All right. Dispenses with summary of actions. The next item on our agenda is a discussion with the town clerk about changes in the precinct locations. Mr. Palmer?
Go down further. What is your amendment? There you go.
I'm here before you tonight to discuss relocation of several precincts. The school committee voted not to allow voting in the elementary school, so we have three precincts that we're using elementary schools, and we need to find a new location for those to vote. It is in your duties and responsibilities as a master of law to designate polling places and have them ready for voting, so. The three precincts are the elementary school, the East Falmouth Elementary School, the T-Ticket Elementary School, and the Morris Pond School. Precincts 3, 4, and 6. And I'm also asking you to consider moving precinct 9, which votes now at PAL. PAL is, I noticed a "For Sale" sign in front, so I'd rather be ahead of the curve on that one if something came and they did sell. Whether we would be allowed to use the building is an unknown, so I'd ask to consider moving four precincts. And I did hand out a map to everyone showing the precincts, and my recommendation, the problem being is having buildings within each precinct that are large enough, accessible enough, and have enough parking to have voting take place at them, so.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into this discussion, I would just like to voice my disappointment with the school committee's vote to remove voting from the schools. I know that Mr. Palmer can't do anything but come back to us with another request, but I'm very sad that we are going to not have voting in the elementary schools, we're not going to have a chance to role modeling to our students that voting is an important thing to do. I believe that there are ways that we can have safety in the schools and have voting safely done there. We have a police officer on duty. There has not been, in the research I've done, an incidence of violence in the school system in this country in a polling place. And I know that the safety of the students has been put forward as the number one priority. Actually, in a republic, freedom of speech, freedom of vote, and the rights... Actually, in a republic, freedom of speech, freedom of vote, and the rights that we have for liberty actually sometimes does outweigh safety. Otherwise, we'd be doing all sorts of dramatic things. And I'm very disappointed that that vote was done. I understand we can't change what happens with it, but I just wanted to clarify that I wish that we could still have voting in the schools, because I think it's a very, very important educational tool for the students. And the idea that, you know, our voters are people that they need to be that worried about is an unfortunate thing for them to be stating.
I concur. I want to say I concur with Doug's point of view. I agree that voting is an educational opportunity for students, as well the fact that we have a police officer in every single precinct. Sometimes we've had two. And I think, at least to my way of thinking, there's significant protection, or at least, I think, due protection has been provided for the students. And it is a disappointment that we have to change it. Because the other thing that happens is, once you change voting places, and people have been so accustomed to these for years and years, it could have, it could have an effect on, on how people vote, or if they vote, or when they vote. So I'm concerned about that as well, getting the information. That's the way I thought, having, having something on the board that shows where the precincts are, although you can't always tell what they are from, from a color photo. But we know, we know where the precincts are. So can you talk about it again and identify what, how these, how this change will take place and what it will be again, just so we can get it set in our minds? Precinct one will stay the same?
Yeah, we're just talking about three, four, six, and, and I'm requesting to consider nine also. It is nine, yes, nine. I get nine and eight confused sometimes.
Three, four, six, and nine.
Correct. And I'm asking, my recommendation is to move them to the high school, the new gymnasium at the high school. And I did give you a diagram of the, the high school school grounds, and there's a red X on top of the new gymnasium versus the old gymnasium. That can be isolated from the rest of the school. And I have talked to the high school principal, Joe Driscoll, and talked about parking issues there. And hopefully, we can work it out where the whole front of the school can be kept free for voting. And the teachers and whoever else uses the front of the school will be able to vote either in the parking lots near the tennis courts, or the parking lots behind the school. There's another small parking lot there. That leaves, that gives about 125 parking spots outside of the gymnasium. They also will be able to reroute the buses out through the back parking lot near the tennis court, rather than coming through the front of the school, which is to avoid the congestion. And to be honest, that is one of the main concerns of the schools, is the congestion when the kids are coming and going. And ideally, those situations at the schools have never been great for parking and for congestion, besides given the fact, we don't want to put up any barriers, as you alluded to, for voting. We want to encourage as much voting as we possibly can, and make it as easy as possible for them to vote. But that, they voted, the school committee has the authority to vote not to allow certain things in the school, and they have voted not to allow voting. So, so moving forward with that, and not being able to identify any buildings within each of these precincts, I, I'm going to recommend that we, we bring all four of those precincts to the high school. And I think this will be, actually be a pretty good situation. We're not really moving that far. The furthest precinct away from the high school is precinct four. And from the, from the East Falmouth School to the high school is, is just a little over two and a half miles. And I think from the furthest reaches of four, is probably the furthest distance anybody would have to drive, is approximately five miles. And always is a resistance to change, but once people become accustomed to change, sometimes they find out where we've gone to is a better situation. A few years back, we did change from the fire station in East Falmouth to the Watworth Congregational Church. And in North Falmouth, where we had a problem with congestion in the school, we moved to the North Falmouth Congregational Church. And I think everyone's that votes there is in agreement that those were very good changes. And I think, once people have become accustomed to this change, I think they're going to find that parking and access to the, to the building, and getting in and out without disrupting the schools, they, once they get accustomed to the change, I think they're going to find that this may be a good move also. It'll be new for Falmouth, where we're having more than one precinct voting at one location. There are other towns that do it. Mashpee all votes in one high, elementary school gymnasium, I believe it is. I went, one of their Saturday elections, and see how it did operate, and it seemed to, to run pretty smoothly, so.
And precinct six, which votes in Morris Pond, or had been voted in Morris Pond, would be going to the high school, which actually is in precinct six. I mean, it's.
To be honest with you, that one makes more sense than all the rest of them. It's more centrally located to, and I'll move over here.
You can take the microphone with you, Mike, if that makes it easy, just so the folks at home can hear.
This right here is where, is the Morris Pond School, where precinct six was voting. And this is precinct six up here. This is the high school right here. So it actually makes sense to have precinct six voting at the high school. This is precinct nine, which, which votes at the PAL, and you're only moving a little distance. This is three, and this is four, the T-Ticket Elementary School, the East Falmouth Elementary School. Again, I said from here to here, it's only two and a half miles. I think I measured from here and from up here to here, and it was approximately five miles. It's, I didn't trace, go around roads, just a straight directional path on it. But I, I think, I think with what we can do with the parking and accessibility of this building, I think it may be a good move. I think people may find that they, they may like it.
I think what you said is absolutely correct in thinking about voting in our schools. But I think there's an issue that schools have right now concerning safety, and things have happened in some of our schools with our younger children that we would never believe would ever happen in a school. And I think that saying it is something that we've taken away from children to know about voting, yes, we have. And I think it's a very sad situation that we had to do that, because we are afraid and concerned about having our children and people who want to cause harm to our children to come into the same building, and to open it up and say, come in and do your voting, but we certainly do not want any other problems. I understand what is happening with our schoolchildren in some situations that we're absolutely shocked. And I think in keeping the voting in one building does have its advantages, and people will adapt. And I do have to defend the schools in saying why thinking about children from the ages of five to 10 could have some kind of a situation. I understand that on the safety part.
Well, they've, they've already voted to do that, so.
Yes.
I have my concerns about it. I, I, I don't think you're closing the schools completely to all other things, and that, and you're implying that voters are dangerous people, which is.
It's not the voter. It's not the voter.
Well, that's what we're closing.
Well, it's, okay.
Let's not do back and forth here.
All right, that's fine. Okay.
I'd like to commend Mr. Palmer for coming up with a plan that, I think actually has some positive spins on it that I hadn't thought of. I appreciate the way that this can actually move forward and work in a positive way.
Michael, what would be the first election that this change would affect?
This may be an election, yeah.
The local election.
So we have to get the word out. Is, other obvious, obviously, there's this form that we're getting the word out. Are there any other things that you're planning, or that you're going to attempt to plan in order to get the word out to the, the individual residents of the precincts?
We do have to notify every, every registered voter of a change of precinct. So that will be a postcard that will go out. I'll have to plan the timing of that. It would like to be maybe closer to the election, so they, they'll be fresh in their minds. Obviously, I'd like to use whatever publicity we can from the newspaper, FCTV, maybe here again, coming back, whatever we can do to notify people of this change. I'd like to do quite a bit of signing, maybe the, the police have a sign. I see on Main Street, it says, slow down or don't drive when you're texting. If we can use one of those big type of signs at the schools to inform the people that aren't aware that the new voting location is the high school, I'd like to do something like that. But I try to use every possible way to notify people. And you're not going to get everybody. You're still going to have people calling and saying, you know, where's the voting location? But we'll do everything that we can, if anybody has suggestions, we're more than happy to follow through on those.
Any plan perhaps then to put, say, obviously, folks have put campaign signs in front of the schools in years past, possibly putting signs up that say, you know, vote at the high school this time, or?
Correct. That's what I was referring to, those big signs that they pull on the tractor, on the trailer, that say, don't drive and, don't text and drive. I see, I saw one down at Main Street. I don't know how many they have. I did see one parked at the Jones, the Stop &amp; Shop lights that was on the back of a pickup truck that was kind of like a TV set. And I wrote down the number, just I didn't call and find out how, because it was a rented one, I believe, from someplace, to see if that was, how much that would be cost to do. But they have some kind of signing, obviously, at the, at the locations that we're not using anymore. Something substantial, people know that we're not, we're not using those locations anymore.
Okay. Anyone from the public like to weigh in on this? Mr. Fineran?
Michael Fineran, precinct six. I agree with everything that was, almost everything that was stated here, but I think there's one thing that hasn't been mentioned. I mean, you're instilling in young children's minds that voters are evil. I mean, I just can't fathom this, especially with Mr. Jones' research that said he found no evidence anywhere of anything ever happening at a poll. People who vote are the decent people in this country. I mean, I hate to use the word disgraceful, but I think that's what this voted decision was, my opinion anyway. Thank you.
You can certainly take that up with the school committee. Unfortunately, we have no control over school properties. So.
So my recommendation is to move precincts three, four, six, and nine to the new location at the new gymnasium at the high school.
Okay. And so you'd need a motion, or a move, a decision by the board, excuse me, to do that? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second?
Reluctantly.
So a motion and a second to move the voting for precincts three, four, six, and nine to the high school. Any public, any further public comment? Sir?
Excuse me. My name is Lionel Hall. My mom works at the polls there. My father can't drive. So therefore, when she's working at the polls, she has to go and take him first, then go back, or, or whatever. But once again, I echo some of these folks that are saying, I'm not sure what the school committee was voting on, and I wish I kind of was a little more involved and had been there. This is the terrorism that we're all worried about. We're running from a threat that, one, Mr. Jones says it hasn't happened. Two, were there any other plans to do something different? I mean, if there was the safety issue, couldn't we have done something? And we have a policeman there. Or two, what else, and with no record of anything happening, what, what else do we need to do, basically? So I'm, I'm kind of dismayed at the wisdom of the, the school board on this issue. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, just to summarize, their feeling was that they're putting a lot of new security in place in all the schools, where you have to get buzzed in and out of the school. And they're trying to add more security to the schools. They felt that the schools were open and, and to, to anybody that could come in and out of the school on election day. So they're trying, they're trying to make the schools safer. They felt that this was opening up the schools, and it could possibly lead to an unsafe situation. So that, that was their feeling at the school. And it was pretty unanimous.
It was a unanimous, we do have the, the minutes from their meeting. All right, no further comment. You know, I'm going to toss an editorial comment out there myself, and between what Mr. Hall said and what Mr. Jones said, it occurred to me that, you know, in, in recent months, there's been a lot of press about the fact that the NSA has actually been spying on Americans. And there's a certain irony that some of those folks who talk about that say that they're protecting this country. But indeed, that and situations like this make one wonder if the very things that we're doing to protect the citizens of this nation aren't, in fact, destroying the very thing that we're trying to protect. And I think we all need to very, think long and hard about that, because this is, it's rapidly descending into a situation where we're doing more to protect ourselves than we are to maintain the freedoms that we have fought so hard to protect over the, the many generations that this nation has been in existence. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda, we have an application for a new all-alcoholic common victual license and an entertainment license. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that New Falmouth Woods LLC, doing business at Ballymead Country Club, has applied for a new all-alcoholic common victual liquor license located at 125 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. A hearing to be held this evening. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present?
Charlie Passios is the chief operating officer for New Falmouth Woods LLC.
Good evening. Do we have some recommendations, Mr. Jones?
Not that it were my package, is there? Maybe there's some more here. We have the requests.
We have requests, please provide, please provide. Did we not get the recommendations back in time? I don't seem to have anything in this packet either. I do apologize, but absent recommendations from some of our departments, including most notably the police department and the background checks that are done as a part of this application, I'd be hard-pressed to approve the application at this time.
We have one from the, now I guess we don't, it's requesting it.
Yeah, we, there are memos in here for requests, but no actual.
Mr. Chairman, if we might, we're going to double-check the files and the likelihood that there was just an inadvertent omission.
All right, so while we're waiting for that, then, can we, and I apologize for the delay, but I think in order to cover all our bases, I'll ask for, that we table this?
I ask, you know, just from the file that you have in front of you, if you have any questions, because I do have another meeting I have to get to.
Fair enough. Any questions?
Well, I just have one question. Why, why is it a new license instead of a transfer of a license?
New Falmouth Woods LLC is the owner of the property. We've had the property on lease for five years, so there was a previous tenant that was removed this fall. The tenants, the tenant had Chef Roland's Catering in there last year, who held the license last year. We held it previous to that. But when Chef Roland came in, it was, by legal counsel was said, he should hold the license, so we relinquished ours, let him have it. Now that they're out, we're back trying to recover the business, and now this, that's why the new license, because he had to cancel his license, and we just waited.
That's the only question I had regarding.
So this is a duplicate.
Yeah.
It's really a duplicate of what we had three years ago, or four years ago.
So you could have done a renewal in December and then changed manager, or do it this way?
We could have, but it was a little bit messy, so we just decided, let him lapse his, and we'll just reapply after the first of the year. It was cleaner, much cleaner.
That was my concern.
Okay. Well, we can table this. If there are any further questions, though, and you're not here, I'd just let you know that we, we could continue it as well to another date. I don't know what kind of timelines you have to worry about.
It's just got to get to the state, because that takes a little time at the ABCs.
Understood, yeah.
And you're going to have all your staff, since Mr. Murphy's not here, I'll go ahead and ask it to be tip-certified and?
Everybody's tips. It's a policy that we have for us and for the insurance companies now.
Good.
You could, you could do the public part.
Yeah, we can entertain public, this is a public hearing, so we'll entertain questions or comments from the public. Anyone who is in favor of this project, or in favor of granting this license, excuse me? Anyone who is opposed to granting the license? Any general questions? Okay. I'd like a motion to table this until we can see if, in fact, we do have the necessary recommendations in the file.
I'll move to table.
All right, so a motion and a second to table. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? All right, so we will come back to this before the end of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our, on our agenda, we have a presentation of the chapter, 2014 Chapter 90 roadway program.
I think you have to turn the bulb on. Peter, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're going to need the few things here.
Thank you, Peter McConney, Town Engineer. As the presentation is warming up, this presentation tonight will be our annual presentation for our Chapter 90 roadway funds. We've been doing it the past several years for all the roads throughout town that we do our roadways for. What we try to do at Public Works is we try to split the roads up to be through all the five districts in town, Woods Hole, East Falmouth, downtown area, North Falmouth, Hatchville. The roadway list for 2014 include Little Harbor Road in Woods Hole. It's along the, Little Harbor Road is along the Coast Guard facility, including connecting roads. I have a slide that shows the connecting roads. So, the total length of that will be 2,700 feet. Water Street, Albatros Street, Millfield Street, North Street. That's a total length of 4,150 feet, and those roadways have been affected by a gas main installation that they've been doing this past fall and went the month. The main is in, and currently, they're working on the services. And once they get done with the roadway down there with the, between the main and the services, the road's pretty cut up. And what the gas company would do would only patch those roadways, and the roadways would need to be fully overlaid. We've run through this in the past with the gas company. Nobbska Road would be from Woods Hole Road to Oyster Pond Road, total length of 1,300 feet. And Depot Ave. from Palmer Ave. to Highfield Ave., total length of 850 feet. Highfield Drive, excuse me, Highfield Drive was completed last fall from Highfield up to the Academy, so that'll be a full write-down from Queen Anne's Byway all the way up to the Academy, all the way up to the facility. And Davisville Road in East Falmouth, we're looking to go from the school to Seashell Lane, and the reason why we stopped at the school is the intersection project is going to be going down to the intersection of the entrance to the schoolways, and they're going to be doing the widening in the areas in that area starting sometime this year, either in the spring or in the fall. So, the first slide, Little Harbor Road, it shows, Little Harbor Road is the long road along the Coast Guard Academy. It shows a portion of Crane Street. Crane Street is state and it's also town, and the portion where it goes, where it transitions from state to town is right at the bridge over the bike path, approximately 200 feet. Cowdery Road will run from the, where the gates are at the steamship at Thodderie, and come up and go down and meet at Little Harbor Road. Butler Street is another roadway approximately 400 feet long. And then Henkley Road is approximately 150 feet long. It's a longer road, but the portion that's paved to the first driveway is, will be doing for Henkley. The second portion would be the Water Street, Albatros Street, Millfield Street, and North Street. What we're looking at doing is we're looking at doing a portion of Water Street from where it turns from state Woods Hole Road to Water Street down to Luskam Ave., and then start up at the south side of the bridge and run from the bridge down to Albatros Street. From Albatros Street down two streets to Millfield Street, Millfield Street up to Sepulveda, or Quisit, and then North Street down to right in front of where the school building is. Some of these areas, there'll be, it'll be asphalt overlay, but some of these areas also have sidewalks that are deteriorating, so the sidewalk panels will be rebuilt and reinstalled and some ADA crossings across the roadway in that area. We've had some recent, we've had a lot of complaints in the past several years of people tripping over the sidewalks, but the MBL is doing research now, and there's patients going into the MBL. There's more activity down there with patients, so we want to make sure that they have a safe way to be able to get up Water Street and down MBL Street. Nobbska Road, it's across from Harbor Hill Road when you come up, come around the corner. It goes from Woods Hole Road down to Oyster Pond Road. Nobbska Road heads back down towards Woods Hole, and Oyster Pond heads back down to Surf Drive. It's a portion that will be milled and overlaid. And Depot Ave., this is the portion that'll go from the byway up to the, past the bus station to the entrance gates to where the, to where the Academy is, the big stone pillars at the Academy. And that, the Highfield Drive this year will also get the top coat for, to finish their project off. It'll be one complete roadway. And Davisville Road, as I said, in front of the school all the way down to Seashell Lane, it's approximately 7,700 feet on this roadway, so it's a good portion of roadway. And Davisville Road is narrow, so on this road, what will happen is the, over the spring and summer months, Public Works will be going in and taking care of any drainage problems and looking at any sidewalk problems. And then in the, after the Labor Day, they'll be looking at, they'll go down and mill the road, and they'll do the asphalt overlay on the road. What we've found out with the roadway overlays is it's easier for doing a milling of the roadways. When we do a reclamation of the roadway, it's, the machines that they use, they pulverize down, they take all the asphalt and they take all the base and they grind it up eight to nine inches deep, and you can't drive on it until the rollers go over and pack it back down onto the road again. So, you could be, you know, one lane traffic for an hour, an hour and a half, two hours, three hours, for as long as they're pulverizing that edge of the roadway. Whereas a milling machine, it travels right behind the truck. Most, I remember, Main Street last year, it just travels right behind the truck. It churns the mills right into the back of the truck. It leaves a grooved pavement, but you can drive on it right behind the truck. And what that does is it also saves the profile of the roadway, so we're not losing any profiles. You basically keep the roadway where it is so the driveways will meet. And that is basically our roadway, our roadway schedule for this year. We're looking at to start, in the Woods Hole area, we're looking at to start in the March timeframe to do the prep work, and we'd like to do the milling and the paving and be out of there the first week of, first to second week of May, and then go back in the fall and do sidewalk work. It gets pretty busy down there after middle of May where you get all the activities and the restaurants opening up, so we don't want to, we don't want to be in the way down there. They've already had a tough winter with the gas company.
Now, I have two questions. Peter, what was the funding this year in Chapter 90?
Funding in Chapter 90, it's been basically steady for the past several years, two or three years. It's 1 million, it's 1.259 million. It's basically been steady. Last year, this year, I think it's $9 or $10 higher than last year. So, and, but this is a good, actually, this is a good indicator road. We have so many roads in Falmouth. We have Acapescot, we have Walker Street, so many roads, Old Barnstable Road, that would actually have to split if we were going to do the whole roadway. We'd have to actually split the roadway up because the funds, the yearly funds that come from the Chapter 90 would not be able to, not be able to cover the roadway.
And when you, we refer to sidewalks, so they usually asphalt sidewalks or are some of them concrete?
Both.
Both?
Yes. Last year, we had, when we did Main Street, we had the concrete sidewalks in the Main Street area. And Woods Hole, along Water Street, the sidewalks are concrete. Actually, it's a mixture. It's a mixture of concrete and asphalt. For the most part, they're concrete.
Yeah, I think that's so great. Remember, I don't know if you were here then, but back in the 90s, when the Board of Selectment voted the road program, one of the pieces to the road program was that any time a road was to be reconditioned or resurfaced or come under, come under any kind of major reconstruction, that there would be a sidewalk put in if a sidewalk didn't exist. And if the sidewalks were there in need of repair, that they would get repaired. And over the years, when you really look around the town, you can see how that policy has been pretty effective because we have a lot of sidewalks. And when I drive around the Cape and go to other towns, they don't have any sidewalks. It's absolutely amazing to go through towns like Barnstable, and there are no sidewalks. So, I always thought, and people like to have sidewalks, and you hear about that a lot from the public when talking about sidewalks, that they really like the idea that Falmouth has as many sidewalks. Like Jones Road was one. I remember when those sidewalks went in. So, that was a good plan, and it's being carried out, and I think that's really great for the community.
What we try to do is on our roadways, if the funds, if there are funds, we try to work within the sidewalk. Sometimes we have to come back at a future date to do the sidewalks over. Old Barnstable, the past couple of years was a perfect indicator. This year, we'll be doing the middle section of Old Barnstable. We'll be looking at putting a sidewalk in a portion, portion of the area. The roadways are narrow. You've got narrow roadways, and there's not a lot, not a lot of street license, not a lot of light, so it's dangerous. And what you try to do is make it intermodal. You try to be able to have people move from one area down to the other, either on bikes or on foot, so.
The timing of this is quite fortuitous because I think we just all received a letter three or four days ago requesting work on Davisville Road.
Right, we did.
Yeah, Davisville Road is, anyone that travels Davisville Road knows that the speed limit's 30 miles an hour. You don't want to go too much over 30 miles an hour on the roadway because you get bumped around on it pretty good. So, yeah, and Davisville Road is also very flat. It can go, you can go 1,200 feet and maybe get a foot of relief, a foot up or down vertically, so there's not much room for the drainage to go. So, the drainage basins there, luckily, they can handle the water, but we just have to do some rebuilding of them.
It's well-traveled, too.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like a motion to take the application for the all-alcoholic common victualler license off the table.
So, move.
Motion, second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Excuse me. We don't have the recommendations, so I would ask that for a motion to continue this for two weeks to our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, could I just interject? We are attempting to call, make one phone call that still has a bit of hope that we might be able to get something to you tonight. I apologize, I should have clarified that for you. Would you like us to pursue that? Heather's trying to make that call right now.
Yeah, because if we can get this done, it's going to be helpful to the applicant.
The only one we're waiting for is the Police Department, right?
That's the most significant. All right. Well, if there's no objection, then by consensus, I'll just put it back on the table. All right. Next item on the agenda then, we have the vote articles and execute warrant for the April 2014 special town meeting. All right, we'll go page by page, as we usually do. Article one on page one.
And we add Article one to the special town meeting warrant?
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Page two, Articles two through 11.
This still does include the override? I'm trying to remember which one is the article on the, no, it's not, okay. I move Articles two to the 11. Am I going to get it added to the warrant?
Second.
Motion and a second, add Articles two through 11. Any discussion on the motion?
I have several question marks, so I have to go back and look at them and see what they said.
Okay.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Articles 12 through 18.
Sorry. I have some questions. I have to check them out.
Article 12 is the, the school department's request...
Is that, is that the override?
No, that's fourteen.
No? What is that?
That's fourteen.
Oh, fourteen is the front two and a half.
But that's a petitioners article.
It is a petitioner's article, so we have to...
So, what's twelve? This is to, it's for out-of-district special needs tuition costs?
Yes.
I guess they'll explain it at a town meeting.
And what's also confusing is that there's an article on the regular town meeting to create the stabilization fund for special needs. That's really much more for fiscal year 2015 than 2014. This is for this current...
This is the current year?
Right.
Correct. Current year expenses for special needs, Article 12.
Okay, I guess my question is on Article 15. This is the Board of Selectment article, but would that not be a waterways funding article?
It would come from the waterways.
It would come from the waterways.
That'll be part of the motion from the Finance Committee.
Oh, okay.
But it falls under our jurisdiction, therefore, it comes from us.
Right. I just...
I'll go ahead and move that we add Articles 12 to 17 to the warrant.
Second.
Any other questions? Okay, motion and a second. All right, Articles 12 through 17?
Yeah.
Okay. Add Articles 12 through 17. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? And we have Articles 18 and 19.
I move we add Articles 18 and 19 to the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Motion to execute the warrant?
Second. I move to execute the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second to execute the warrant. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. I'll pass this down for signatures. Oh, the lights, please. It is 8:25. We have a number of interviews. I'm going to, we'll take a five-minute recess, just so the board can stretch our legs. We've all been sitting for a half an hour, as I know some of you have as well. So, we'll reconvene at six, at 8:30. Excuse me.
Excuse me, Brett?
Yes.